Just gonna be there first week.
Oh, okay, so I'll.
This last all the time. Yeah, and one of the people from the college wanna do it in Denver, so I know one of them.
Oh, you switch him down. I just don't want to wait too long for it to clear it out for the rest of the month.
Okay, any word on Mr.?
James. That's what I was wanting to say, fall, I guess, if it's that into fall sports require fields.
None of us, yeah.
So, um, so the your play will integrate this year like.
Yeah, I like the usual, and he was not had a generous breakfast. No, we have everything.
Um, somebody had the technical years.
Well, we've we've saw her voice and they're also being all involved.
Oh.
That ball.
And then we have five ball.
John Grass.
Ball involved as well, too, and they require fields.
Hmm.
Oh. How city you guys have the gray field? Now, my whole day. I mean, this is easy for us. Three. Hi, Alan.
Hey, how's it going?
How are you?
There you go.
Hmm. Over there. Uh huh, we uh, we had Monday off, August Labor Day, and I'm not working tomorrow, so I had to think three days into five days worth of work. It's long.
I'm sure that was no problem, right?
Hmm. No way, but you know, you could do that otherwise I'm sorry. You can do all the time. No, I work at the college. Well, you guys don't have a union, do you?
Yeah, I'm in the union.
Are are you what you mean is a C S E?
C S E?
C, I'm sorry, C S E A.
Oh, that's the union I'm in, too.
There's an adjunct union in that part of two, but I can't remember what it is, so. We're waiting for us.
Yeah.
Texas is in like.
Well, he's okay. Small driving.
He did.
But they're not sitting like two hours ago, but came down and started.
Oh, I know. You see, you see those dogs?
Yeah, they ran out, I was behind this guy on his bike, and then like ran out.
Yeah.
Tried to get his tires off their home.
Sorry, I didn't mean to send a nasty email, but I've been trying to contact more paper days and those dogs. Well, there's dogs, but that one particular is like severely injured and just abandoned. I've been talking to all the neighbors. Sorry, it's why not. No, sorry. They're just too tight.
It'd be a little psycho that later.
Okay.
But. So was going out, isn't it?
Hmm.
Yeah.
All your men go also. Wow.
It always takes Alan.
What's that?
So it always takes you getting involved.
I know.
That's how we get along for campus.
You're like, I'm calling on, I'm gonna pull some tea here, for example.
Well, I don't want a student getting, we have two, we have high school on. We have two high schools on on campus and we have. College students, I don't want anybody getting hurt.
Well, do you guys wanna, if I've got anything back from Russ, I guess we could edit.
Nice man. I'm in charge.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, let's come. This is a workshop, so we'll start.
Okay.
Alan, you're up. Do you have a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, I see.
We can get answers. So, um, as part of our strategic planning workshop, there was a request to kind of give overview like projects going on in the city. This is focused on some of the work. Obviously, there's a lot of smaller ones around town or whatever, but here's kind of the overview. Pierce Field or the airport, Sports Complex, um, the resort concept in Red Hill Park, the Lake Shore Drive Streetscape, Austin Resort, which is the property across the street. Um, what we're just kind of calling South Walmart, which is the city-owned property around Walmart, Catcher Supply. And then a variety of housing projects, variety of roads projects, variety of parks projects. Then a few other projects that I thought were important enough to talk about a little bit, but don't really fit in either of these. Yeah. So. We'll jump into the airport one, feel free to just, you know, break it down, be like, whatever. And this is a hundred percent comprehensive, but should give an overview of the project concepts that we're working on now. Kind of what the current situation is. Okay, so a couple of photos, um, this is what was the Pierce Airport, which was operated by the county for a number of decades. Um, shut down in the early nineties and the property was purchased by the city fairly shortly after.
Through what that was through the redevelopment, actually, right?
What was the reading?
You know, I I don't, I don't have a great information. I was told that the the uh, development around Walmart and McDonald's, that stuff, um, started happening. And then there started being complaints about flight path and various things and, um, but I I I really honestly don't know of all the reasons the county decided that. It'd be something that would be pretty nice to have today, but.
Wasn't wasn't that originally, uh, not owned by the county, but the the?
Well, yeah, the the, um, long-term history, um, to digress a little bit, it was actually federal, federally owned land, the airport where the hospital is, um, where Obsidian is, like all of that is federal land. And, um, some of this specific site was actually given to the Lower Lake Branch area as tribal lands and then they didn't occupy it, what's now the Coin Nation. They didn't occupy it, and so the federal government took it back. This was something that happened a lot of, um, federal, I mean, that's some of the history here. And then at some point, all of this was transferred to the county. So you look at the old records, um, where behavioral health, the old courthouse, all of that stuff on both sides. Um, on the highway there was federal land that gifted to the county and then they've sold off of the year. Thanks to you, but you're responsible, we weren't sure we were gonna end this, or.
Fine. I had a last minute phone call that wouldn't hang up.
Okay. Um, okay, so here's a more recent shot of the property. This was a couple of years ago, right? Starbucks was on there, started construction. You can still see the location of the old runway, though the pavement itself is gone there. Okay, so there's a number of different sort of concept plans floating out here. This conceptual plan document was done, I think, around twenty twenty-one, uh, by the city. We hired an architecture firm to sort of flush out some of the vision that the city had in this. And the the current site plan that we're working from for the environmental impact report is somewhat different from this, but, um, has the same, um, overall focus, so the concepts are the same. So, um, you know, the city could have sold this off for just some standard strip mall development a number of years ago and probably, um, some would be built out, but uh, the council really wanted this to be, um, you know, view this as an important project and something that we had one shot in doing right. It really could transform the trajectory of Clear Lake. So the focus here is more of this property being a destination itself and creating more of a walkable downtown feel that has a mix of retail, a lot of food, um, you know, some exciting public spaces and, um, there's a we had discussions, um, even back at this time with Adventist Health. And, um, so there's a about them really planting their flag here as part of this project. And so you'll see the wellness aspect, um, sort of what went into the site. Um, just a few other kind of renderings to give you an idea. Um, the the road alignment is quite similar, although the current plan we're working on eliminates sort of the the double, um, roads right there with sort of park space in between and park space has been incorporated in other, uh, parts of the project design. Um, there is a residential development that's hopefully envisioned as part of the project. Now, this will be single-family stuff or four-wheel stuff, but the idea is, um, something a little more high-density. But, you know, townhouses, things that can have first floor, uh, retail, something that really doesn't exist anywhere in Lake County. But, um, we feel like if this develops in this way, it could be a real attractive, um, place for for this type of presentation. Um, just, uh, this is called Street Strategy Public Space. I mean, there's a ideas having public spaces where there can be a farmer's market, streets closed down for events, um, you know, different activities that really bring more of a vibrancy that, uh, we don't really have a location for per se in the city right now. I mean, the hope still remains to bring some of that back to Lake Shore Drive, but being that it's a very linear corridor rather than a traditional downtown. Um, it's a little more difficult, so this idea, um, just showing kind of some more, you know, ideas for some of the public space. Um, this is related to the public market, so, um, all of you have seen some of the renderings that are actually in my office as well, but this is related to creating, um, a large indoor-outdoor space that can be used by a number of, um, vendors and retailers, uh, food, other things, just thinking like Oxbow Market, Napa, or those type of spaces. And, you know, this is, you know, all concepts called a hanger, but just trying to work in perhaps some throwback stuff to the airport theme was part of the development. Okay, so this is kind of wrap up here. Um, so what's happened, um, at least since I've been with the city is, you know, this is something that's been talked about for over thirty years and there's been very little progress. There was almost, um, some forward progress in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. And, um, the environmental beauty of the city did as well as the economic climate, um, killed that. It never really came back. And so we decided to have more direct city involvement rather than just signing the whole thing off to, um, some type of developer relying on them to push it. Um, we've been much more active in that. Um, the city actually had the opportunity to purchase some of the properties that have been sold off over the years that are kind of rounded to create a larger, more attractive, um, overall project. So a number of those were purchased, of course, you got the deal in place for the Fairfield End. Um, we were on the cusp of having eighteen pattern constructed. And then, of course, we have the deal in place for the Adventist Health Medical Clinic. At this point, we're still working actively to bring in, um, some acre tenants, um, and identify a master developer for hopefully the whole site. If not, a master developer, it is a large project, so it could include multiple master developers. Um, we're still in the, um, process of developing the environmental impact report, just so you know, this has been going on really for over a year. Um, we have all of the technical studies, most of the sections of the report are done. Really, the only thing we're waiting on is the archaeological report. Um, and once we, uh, receive that, which just checked in with archaeologists again this week and expecting any day, um, we will be able to finish up that section and release the draft. And there's a whole process of the public carries and, um, so. And then we really need to, um, get to work on identifying some additional infrastructure funding. I mean, when we started down this road with the, uh, some of the PG settlement money that we had with the cost of things, we had probably enough money to construct pretty much all the infrastructure with this, with this site. And, um, that is, you know, looking, okay, so we're gonna have to find a little money. So I think there's, you know, certainly a few feasible strategies, um, for some grants and other financing stuff that can make it happen. I mean, this is a project that a lot of people are interested in partnering with, but just because it's in Clear Lake, in Lake County, there's, um, this is a a project that a lot of developers don't really expect to see here, but I think they, um, the vision is intriguing. But, um, we have to make it as attractive as possible in what we're doing with the environmental impact report and then trying to bring all the infrastructure funding in, um, and get that done so that, um, it's not on the developer to do most of that. It's are gonna be important pieces to get. So I'll stop there and see if there's kind of any other questions about.
You you have a site plan for Venice, separately still going on?
Well, we have, I mean, there's, there's a site plan that you will see in the, um, if the environmental impact report is based on is different than this one. There's been a lot more work that's been put into that that incorporates, um, Adventist Clinic and a possible hospital and and others more specific to retail of the way that, um, entitlement and the, um, environmental review process, the way we set this one up is that basically we're doing what's called a planned unit development. So it's not, um, the ultimate approval won't be for a specific, say, grocery store in this location, but it's improving a range of uses to be used at the site. There's a couple of different zones, um, and you're proving basically overall square footage that can be developed there, that type of thing. And so the benefit here is once that plan you develop and is approved, environment impact report is approved. Whenever we have a proposed development, we'll just look back, make sure it's consistent with those. We have design guidelines that will be part of this and everything. We just make sure that it's consistent, um, with the timelines that were approved and they don't have to go through additional use permit process. We determine it's consistent and they just really need to apply for their building permits, so it's something very attractive, too.
Um, where's the fire department, the new virus playing?
Well, I mean, we don't have anything specifically in here right now. Um, the there have only been very preliminary conversations with the fire department about, um, they're interested in putting something out. Um, you know, I think depending on how some of these other things work out, location or something like that could change, like depending on, um, if there's a hospital, where the hospital might be located, um, that type of thing. But, um, the flexibility for determining that again is included in what we have planned and.
So it's flexible, so if there.
Yeah.
Cause I know, uh, she has mentioned it, especially with the growing numbers and just kind of like where the stations are, like response time, like it would probably benefit the people that have stations.
Yeah, I mean, I think at a conceptual level makes a lot of sense. I mean, uh, you know, we have had a conversation about, you know, are they able to staff another station, all that. So there would need to be a lot of work put into it, but, um, the area where, so they have, there's the little building that's there now by the animal shelter that's owned by the city and has a long, fairly long term lease to the fire department. They use it just for storage of some equipment now. Um, and, you know, maybe that's a future location, maybe somewhere else, you know, I don't really know, but, um, obviously. Keep going.
Hmm, so the Adventist Health and the Fairfield End, you have a minute from then to develop here?
Yeah, I mean, the the property for the hotel was city sold that.
You have like five year.
Um, well, yeah, there's the deferral. I mean, obviously, the project has been delayed in no fault of theirs at this point, so, um, the developer, um, has a number of properties around the world, actually, wherever he's back in town, we almost always check someone's opinion and says that he's not okay, so. Um, but we do have rights if he doesn't do anything to give the property back for the amount that he paid, so.
Um, and then like for the hanger or all the other public space, we would depend on the a developer to fund those projects?
Well, it's a little unclear. I think, um, it may be difficult to, that would be the idea.
Sure.
Right, there are a number of examples of some type of public-private partnership, um, for that, so I mean, I think personally it's important enough thing that a developer doesn't want to do it, that we should figure out to do it another way. And again, there are examples, um, we need to get some funding from CVG to do the federal environmental review process for the infrastructure part of this, which, um, and so we're gonna be starting that apartment as well, just because I think it's pretty likely that we'll, um, be able to get some federal grant funds to do part of it. And we're going to include that public market component as part of that, correct, because, um, like Economic Development Administration. I think that's something they're going to us on, so.
Is there a bike? The wall goes.
All of it, yes.
All of it.
Your bike.
That's great. I love that for both exercise, you know? At a pool.
Okay. Uh, I, this one, I call it the mixed-use project. I mean, um, this red is really sort of the well, the the property that the city purchased in, I don't know, careless.
I think it was.
Curse really, uh, but, um, where it says Oak Valley Goals in the top, the whole orchard where the apartments are, that was part of this when we purchased it. And then down, um, by PG and Easy Yard there, that little strip where Mutslingers is, um, was also part of the purchase that the city made. So that project is done, Oak Valley Goals is separate, so like the environmental review and stuff that, um, we've done in the planning is really this red boundary, which is largely, um, the sports complex. This far side over by Birds Valley Creek on this side, a part of that is the public share of, um, which has been, you know, fenced off and infrastructure, so we'll talk about that. Um, oh, my ten million got larger than life there and covered that up, but, um, so we we basically have like ten million for the sports complex part of the project right now. There's a couple of other, um, sources that may, um, add to that a little bit, that, I mean, we're always working on trying to find more money, but Congressman Thompson, a little over six million. We got, um, California State Parks, Kockdine United School District gave us a million, Lake County Tribal Health, um, a hundred and fifty thousand. A small help is still significant, and there's some other, um, city funds.
But Adventist was gonna contribute some money.
Well, that was a former president, since he's been gone, we haven't gotten anything online yet, but it's good. There there may be some possibilities. I think, you know, we start focusing on the recreation center, that's something that that is really what Adventist wanted to help support at the time. And they tentatively said that they would commit a million dollars to website. So this is, this is the layout, this is the conceptual design, but, um, we have the the documents, uh, the plans are essentially done. So we have a soccer field, um, that can be split up into smaller fields as well, uh, the turf. Uh, you can see right there, the one that is the, um, recreation center, which we don't have, um, any funding to work on that at this time. Large plaza space, um, to three bigger fields and then the T-ball field, CO on there. Um, and then I have just, well, I'll I'll go over this and there's a few, um, more images that kind of give you flavor of what the design looks like. So some of the infrastructure of parking, this is around the Mutslinger stuff, the Olympic access completed, the housing project, of course, that's done. Um, and then here you can kind of see some of the the major entities of the part of the complex. These were some concepts that were done of the recreation center itself. Um, so you can see kind of the large, uh, multipurpose room. And then this, if you can sort of see the site, and this isn't locked in, this is just a concept level kind of program on all the stuff. So, uh, so that we could actually have, um, basketball tournaments, volleyball tournaments in that, um, large room, other events. And then there's gym and locker room space and other, like the purple down there is other multipurpose rooms that could say be used for an after-school program or, um, some classes used by the community for small events, um, that type of thing. Um, I mean, the the, uh, vision of this project, you know, it is quite expensive, um, but the this was a tier of a project that doesn't exist, certainly in Lake of Casino counties and some of them will be very attractive and really drive, um, economic development for being able to have, um, tournaments and other things that would be a draw even outside of these two. Okay, so well, these are just some old things I had, but this is during when we started construction, kind of on the first phase, you can see Mutslingers there. But, um, the construction documents for this force complex are done. The seat was still held up with the Coin Nation lawsuit, which is in front of the appellate court, unfortunately. Um, because there's federal funding, we also have to do DPO, which is the federal environmental review. Um, that's essentially done, ready to submit with the exception of the tribal consultation portion of that, that's really stalled out for the same reasons. Um, but if we can get past those, um, hurdles, we should be able to do phase construction sometime next year. It's still be the goal of it, um. And, you know, while we don't have enough money to do everything that you saw in the plans, um, we have enough to do enough to gain a little bit. And, um, the current plan would be to like do all of the baseball fields, um, so that we could then utilize the old golf fields for additional development. Hold on, all the soccer to, um, some more of the money, that type of thing.
Faces.
What's that?
Faces.
Yeah, and then, of course, the recreation center itself is another phase. We need to symbol more funding for that, and we don't have anything beyond the conceptual design. We did apply for, um, what seventeen million or so last year for that, but that was under Biden administration program. And, um, I think the funding's been pulled back on that, so we're gonna have to find another source. Um, there are opportunities, I mean, the this source and there's some other ones through the state as well, but looking at this as like a resilience, security resilience center, um, is something that's needed for emergencies, and so there has been a lot of funding allocated to that, and it's not something that, um, you just want to build a twenty thousand square foot building that's only used during wildfire or whatever, so it's a perfect type of fit for something like this. And, um, if we keep trying, we'll, we'll figure it out, but sure. So any, uh, questions on sports complex? Okay, they'll start going a little bit fast. Okay, they'll start going a little bit faster. Um Red Hood Park, so. The um idea would be that once the new ballfields are construction, that are constructed. These old ballfields could be um flipped for some type of development. Here, so the idea, of course, would be keeping the parking lot, the launching ramps, the youth center area. And then this area here in the red, something that will be available for development. I guess I got ahead of myself. So we have um had some serious interest in this. We did have. Um some side papers a year or so ago, we have some on that, we don't have anything active right now, but. We do have someone that is uh wanting to get something on paper. Uh again, we haven't been pushing this so hard because, you know. Unless there's a different traction from the council, but previously, we're not interested in kicking the little beards. So I mean, we could enter into an agreement contingent upon that happening and still get some of the planning and stuff going, and I think there's, there's interest in that, but. Right now, we don't have anything act.
There must be like a guarantee that there's a. They're gonna be able to play for their season, no matter whether it's old field or not.
But, you know, it'd be nice because selling this and.
Yeah.
Creates some. Okay, anything, well, anything else on Red Bud? Good, okay.
Well, is there any plans? Because I know we discussed this, the strategic planning about revamping Red Bud?
Uh I have some stuff on that a little bit later.
Okay.
Okay, so um Lake Shore Drive, uh what we consider the downtown, or you can kind of see from this map. The idea at this point is to focus really from City Hall here, and you can see. We included some of the earlier concept plans, there's a roundabout at the intersection right out here, and you can kind of see the resort property across the street. And this would continue down, connecting basically to Old Highway Fifty Three and Red Hood Park. So, well, again, it's a little difficult, I'm gonna skip it up here quickly, but. Um so there was actually a sidewalk design. Done in the nineties that was funded by the redevelopment agency for all of this area. Um and then there were a number of workshops with a conceptual design. That was completed twenty fourteen, some of you probably participated in those workshops. But what had never happened was sort of merging, creating construction documents based on a conceptual plan, so. Um couple of year, couple of years ago, we hired B K F engineers and they had a group of folks. Um to take that conceptual design that was selected by the community and turn that into construction document, so. We spent a million bucks. And we have our plans thirty-five percent. So we're gonna need, um well, as a last count, about another seven hundred fifty thousand to get them all the way down. So we need to identify some more funding. We've applied for a number of funding sources, we haven't been successful yet, but that's kind of where we are. Kind of started the sequel, uh we haven't been able to get our um archaeological stuff done. Um yeah, and so. If we get some of these other projects done, like airport and stuff, we still plan to move forward with getting archaeological work done. We'll be able to move forward to sequel and get that done. Uh the right wing work and everything is all known, but. That will skip back, so. If you haven't seen the, the uh concept plan and stuff, which you share, but the idea that they came up with was to kind of. Um design the street scape in three different sort of um. Concepts, one areas where there's more um businesses along the frontage. To try to do more of a mini main street, kind of like this, where you, you don't get the full concept, but. It's more concrete, providing the opportunities for restaurants that faces Lake Shore Drive to perhaps have some. Tables out there, you know, um but still providing much more of a sense of place, safety than what you have now. So you can kind of see some of the, the concepts over there on the side. The other would be the entry corridor, so this is more focused. Like at this end here at the north end and then. Um the Old Highway Fifty Three intersection where you come in, some sort of. A little bit more dramatic um entrance that you're kind of coming into the downtown, right? You don't get anything. Like that, and it's still, it's a little harder because we're strictly developed along. Um the lake, but with some design elements, we can create a little bit more impact there, you know, maybe there's an arch or. Clock tower, some, you know, some other type of elements to make it feel like you were. And then because we do have several parks, we, you know, really this would. Kind of be attached to all three of our existing parks on Lake Shore is that. There'd be more green space in these areas, in the sort of park promenades. Which are focused on, you know, the parks are kind of an opportunity to open up sheds to the lake. As much as possible, making sure that we're protecting that, because that's. Okay. Any thoughts or? The, the last, at thirty-five percent, the cost estimate to do all of the was seventeen. But, you know, if we get ten million, we can start here, go as far as our ten million gets us, it'll get some more money.
Have you thought about passing a measure?
It's, it's possible.
Cause I mean, this school district just passed another one, so I mean. I don't know, I think it's. It will help us get us that extra funding that we need just to.
Yeah, I mean, our, our real focus on all these has just been trying to find grants, but if the council is looking at that stuff. It is definitely a potential way to.
Well, I know people want this, and if they're willing to, they want it, then I'm sure they might. Um. I know it's up to have to pay more tax. Same time, like.
Oh, that could be otherwise.
This, this will really help property owners and.
Yours, it might be a control condition. You have to be.
Yeah.
It's, it's not going to develop into what it could be in most of the potential, which is not gonna.
I mean. The legal will speak based off the measure, I mean, they vote for it, so I mean, it wouldn't hurt to try.
Well, it's like. The recreation.
That's different.
Yeah, it's similar. So you still have to have some kind of tax money.
Yeah.
I, I, I recommend going off on discussing.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Okay, um. Austin Resort, this is the. Property across the street, it's about seven and a half, eight acres there. These are some of the old concepts that were done um. Number of years ago, but um what we've asked is. Someone to develop this hotel, resorts, retail restaurants, and maintain public access. Along with the lakefront, hopefully. Um reestablishment of a small marina as part of that as well, the area out there, they're used to be one. Um so the area is still there, but all their infrastructures is gone, so. We uh do have a current exclusive negotiating agreement with a development firm that's actively working on the site plan. Okay.
Wasn't there a one point times uh pier going out there?
Yeah, that last developer that was in was the one that put a pier along the north edge of.
Yeah, so like a fishing pier kind of thing.
And it would, I think the idea was it. Our pipe going out in the lake would go aside on the beach. As I recall.
Um it'd be a nice minute to have um maybe something that comes as part of it.
And I think at one point. It was meant to have a little research. Place by O C Davis in there too.
I mean, I think there's been lots of ideas. Um this is the um. Little over thirty acre parcel that was supposed to be um additional phases of the. Initial Walmart developments, you roughly outlined in red there, so this was something that the city. Purchased um beginning of last year, that was a tax default. Um again, we have a current exclusive negotiating agreement with the development firm that's. Working on the site planning, but this um concept is focused so on the majority of the site being used as a. Big bucks retail center. Um there are some more rugged areas up on the north end near Woodland College, that's where the college is parking lot up there. Um it's quite rocky, um may not be as feasible for development. Um obviously, we'd like to have the. The revenue and the amenities from retail, so that's really the priority, but if there's some stuff that isn't accessible. Maybe could easily be converted into perhaps a, you know, you know, BMX park or so. Um yeah, I can.
I, over the weekend, I saw a cute little pump truck. Like kids with the striders, it's like real small.
There's plenty of rocks. Well, hopefully the skate park. Free work will be available to, we'll be talking about that. Okay, any questions on this one? Um housing, this is Oak Valley Villas, so done quite a bit there. So the projects that are in some sort of queue right now, of course, Eighteenth Avenue, which is what's going to be called Valley Vista. Is up by the hospital, that's another eighty unit project, it's all state owned land. Um we've been working with them for a while to um get complete, they are. Pushing to uh have all their funding and stuff close early December, start construction. Soon after that as possible, depending on weather, but um. And then, of course, what we really need, as we know, is uh Mercury Housing, which is much more difficult to develop. We have the Old Highway Fifty Three subdivision up by the Egg Ranch, it's twenty-two lots that are leased acre to quarter. Um developer on that is ready to go, the only thing that's holding up right now is dealing with water supply, and there's been some hiccups with patents water. Uh that we still don't have a resolution to my knowledge on. On that, so that's, it's being held up there now, Thirty-Sixth Avenue. Same developer also purchased those lots, they used to be city owned, um. There's twenty of them there, um well, there were, there were two sold and houses built, but um. These would be standard, pretty much fifty by hundred lots with um. Sort of mid-range homes, probably three twenty and three fifty, but. Those are also need, we've had a number of hiccups with special districts on this project, um. This is something that the city is gonna be building the road, um. There, it's just dirt right now, so we have the plans done and ready to go out and build on that. If we can um address some of the issues and resources. Um I also wanted to mention the home set program, which was kind of a different take, the city tried a number of years ago to. Provide free lots or purchase lots for people who are gonna build a new home in the city and pay. All of their water sewer connection fees, billing permit fees, school fees, fire fees, all of that stuff in order to provide some incentive. Which um total up to forty to fifty thousand. We had a lot of initial applications that were approved. Um this is right before interest rates started skyrocketing, most of those people. Could no longer uh afford to move forward with it, and we had a couple of people that hung in there, I think the last one. Which I mentioned this in my C M R G report before, um has been trying to get something worked out in the special district for. Uh pretty much a year and finally threw up her hands and gave up and. Uh so now the city's gonna have to take that property back. Um and then. Uh the city took action, I guess, about a year ago, um with the county and Lakeport Development Regional Housing Trust Fund, there's some additional state funding. That can come to us with that, we've been having these, we had one this week to get the organization this together, um. We're gonna be recruiting for some additional members um to serve on that trust fund, the idea. Uh really, the focus that we're planning to take at this point is. Not trying to encourage larger affordable projects, but to focus on. Um rehab programs and info projects, I think. Um that's well suited for what we have here in the city, it's similar for a little. Questions on the housing permits? Roads. Um I think you wanted me to talk about Clear Lake Park.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, okay, good.
I can start with Clear Lake Park or Dam Road Roundabout. Um so that is an overlay of the Dam Road Roundabout project. Um we've just received the sixty-five percent T S N E package. Um that we're in the world we're doing right now, we're in contract with B K F, wants designing it. And we're on track to um have the final plans and everything done at the beginning of the year. And go out to bid next year, hopefully also build it, we do have, I think it's five point five million in construction funding, so. Um we have the funds to do it. Maybe trapped neighbor permit, but. Um Clear Lake Park, I attended a pre-con meeting with Gold State Water yesterday to start the waterline project on.
Mind of all of this was a project we did last year that we haven't been able to finish because of Gold State.
One of the project now, I think we are done. Um there are areas where there are very shallow water. Our treatment on, which is eleven inches. Literally this far along the road, I put my fingers up to it, it's literally a bunch. Um so like. Thirty.
They're all.
Is there a fix to that?
A little bit of flame fryer on it, it's gonna crack.
They did the design and they just put it up.
Yeah, so I. They're churned out, not for the contract, and they're gonna be starting on Monday. Um and hopefully, depending on weather, I don't know if this winter is gonna do last winter, but we're really lucky. This winter, I don't know, I heard some things, um we'll get way my back.
There are a number of cost increases because of delays with our contractor. We are. Passing all of those initial costs.
What's the process on to force them?
Well, it's. Should be pretty easy with them, I mean, we've told them that that's what we expect, they understand that. Um we have a franchise agreement with them that says that if they're stuck in a certain way, they have to move it.
Uh so Burns Valley Olympic Arrowhead um was previously out the bid and we pulled it because. Um everybody got it solved now. I think we can already.
Ready to go back. When do you want, I think you'll be getting it again, so we're not gonna do it this fall.
Well, I mean, we're always. We currently, the deadline is funding this February. Next year, but we've asked for extension, unless you guys heard that we got it approved.
Yeah, we need to finish construction by May. Next year, in order to close out by August.
So this is. So, this is. This is obviously, how many workdays are in, we don't have a lot of time, this is over six million dollars, so.
I don't expect it to take too long, it's. It's grind and pave, it's not gonna be any other days.
It's grind and pave, it should go really fast. It's gonna take longer to adjust the utilities than it does.
All three roads for the.
We weren't able to, because of environmental review channels specifically. Drive will just weren't able to do some improvements in light of them. So it's just, it's all great, because it's like, we just don't have time, so. Go through it, otherwise we will, they're not giving us.
We separated out the dream portion of it as a separate contract, which.
So clearly, so the large, there's a large puddle. Hopefully you guys are going to award. The project. In the um. Being on factor, which is within our, our budget. That was originally part of the painting project, but we have to.
Federal funding department delayed the whole thing, so we found the money, local funds, we don't have.
Next, so Moss Fortieth is um out to bid currently, it opens on nine eleven. And then we're planning to bring it for more to say council on the eighteenth and complete it this year. That will be a really quick project, it's also great treatment. Also gonna be a trapped nightmare for a minute, but. Not as fast as around that would be.
Yeah, that's funded part of it. By the county, right?
Yes, they have a seventy seven percent, first one, seventy eight?
Seventy seven.
Seventy seven, yeah. I think our funds were using gas tanks. About that, uh, Village area, so we started design on the Village area, which is Ridgefield Drive. Lakeview Way, Lakeside Drive, Pineview Drive, Pineview Port and Bay Street. Um, that was kind of, we found a low income point because there's no need to give any concrete. Or drainage improvements in the area, that would be a trip with easy two hundred grand in pay. Uh, we have sixty five percent P S N E rate, that has specs on estimate right now, and uh we don't. Have enough local funds at the moment to fund it, but we will put on the strength. We're ready. Uh, we also have um Ramsey Turner project, which is Ramsey Road, Turner Avenue. Washington Clarkson, Emerson, Jackson, Harrison, and Green. Um, everything north of Turner Avenue is actually private roads, so the, it was southern portions that we. Um, then like Lila. Browns and others. Uh, we have a survey, we have that project, but we don't have that. We also need.
So that was.
Well, so we, again, this was, we were hoping to do this project this year, but. Um, you know, we've had to prioritize archaeological stuff now, takes enormous amount of time. Um, we're prioritizing. Um, the airport and then like other things like Burnet Valley Airman, where we're gonna lose money, you know. So, um, we have gotten that started, but of course. It's not gonna happen this year. Anything else or any questions for Tristan? Okay, you know, we have a few minutes apart, so, um. Austin Skate Park, uh, this is the um. Current design that we have. So, um, you know, the. Skate park that's there has very worn, um. I think it was the first one in the county, it's basically made of. You know, laminated. Was it? Yeah, um, so this would be all concrete, um. We have a lot of security issues there and stuff, and we have to close it down a lot of times, cause stuff gets tore up, so. The idea is bringing something indestructible. Um, this is something the supervisor Spatier is really wanting to see happen, and so. Some of the canvas funds that the board members get set aside, he's been setting aside. All of his funds are essentially started that program for this project, and I think has six hundred thousand. Um, with this design, we put it out to bid and it's actually around eight hundred fifty thousand to do this, which seems crazy, it's not that big, but. Um, so we met with um supervisor and said. What do you think we can sort of dial the plan back and get what we give for six hundred thousand? Or um. Staff on the grant that could supplement that and basically double our money, and so. You know, he has really passion about this, wants to do it right, and so. We decided to hold off, we applied for, what was the final number, a little over a million.
With our uh, with our match, it'll be, we asked for six hundred.
So we would actually be in the position, we might be able to add a few things in if we, if we get that, so.
We'll find out about the.
Do you know timing on that?
We've had a smaller case, because everybody rides those Stacy's and the striders.
Okay, so I'll try to go quick here, we're almost there, but. Um, we've had to close the uh main pier at Red Bud because of safety issues, so. Had a little bit of trouble finding someone to. Um, tell us what we need to do to address that, but that's likely we can work on, um, to get that repaired back open. Um, other things at Red Bud. We have some funding um that we are initiating design, which would be renovating bathrooms, providing. Upgraded lighting, security of the park, security of the hamper and stuff. Um, we actually have a little bit more money than we thought, so we might be able to add some other things in, like there's been some. Ideas of putting playground equipment back over there, and so we'll be looking at that, um. It's probably a little dangerous to say this is present company, but um. Austin Park, we are trying to find some funding, I think we might be able to use the same source to put some eighty eight bathrooms. Um, over by Dog Park. Any other questions on Parkside? Oh, like the Red Bud Thompson Harbor, so um Patty is also, or Director Leva is also actively working on. A couple of funding sources to um do some improvements to. The docks and extending the boat ramps and some other amenities as part of the. Well, that's in the other fund. Renovating. Okay, just a couple other quick projects, um, you know, we have the public works yard, um. That we've, we've put the infrastructure and stuff in, our staff are over there, we have basically an office trailer. Um, we have some, we started designing on the shop, but um. We are trying to find funding to get that built. This is not our project, but this site land shows the uh transit center that'll be over in front of Woodland. Community College and City and Middle School, that the area planning council is working on, um, it's been. Frustratingly slow, but I'm told they may be very close to getting that out to bid. Um, and then a couple other quick things, Caltrans. Because of safety issues on Hundred Fifty Three. Um. Has supposedly identified some funding to do lighting improvements um along that corridor. Um, you can come in, and then also more recently, they've passed now that they are going to be um. Applying for funding to do roundabouts at the Eighteenth Avenue intersection in the Lake Shore. Yeah, it could be, it could be a number of years off, but is probably a caltrans. Here, I mean, safety issue, that's. One of the best ways, as far as they look at it, to slow traffic down, it's safer for pedestrians and stuff, I mean. We haven't asked them to fence in between those two intersections, because. A lot of the fatalities that we've had aren't actually at the intersections, it's people at the fence and taking shortcuts. Between the two. Alright.
Derek, you went on a little roller coaster ride there for a minute.
Tonight's city council meeting like to call this regular meeting to order. At six oh four P M. On September fourth, twenty twenty five. Again, and we have a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Wilson.
Present.
Councilmember Hooton.
Here.
Councilmember Downey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sloten.
Here.
And Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Alrighty. Now we stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Vice Mayor Sloten, would you please leave it?
I. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. With liberty, justice, and.
You could all remain standing, please. Pastor Grayson will do our invocation.
There we go. I was just about to use my preaching voice if it doesn't work, but. Let's pray. Heavenly Father. We come before you and we with with grateful hearts, Father. Um, we thank you for the cooler supposedly weather that we've been having um this summer and and the less favorable conditions for the fires. We thank you and we praise you for the fires that we have had that the you've kept our first responders safe. But also, Father, that they were swift in their actions and and um took care of them quickly. We thank you for your hand in that. We ask your continued protection on them, Father, and as we the weather changes and and as things get a little bit more difficult. Lord, we we just ask your hand of protection over um the first responders, the city and all of our outlying communities, Lord. We we know that you are powerful and you are great. And that you love your children. Father, we ask you to bless this uh city council meeting right now. We thank you for those in front of us, Father, that are willing to to serve the public in this way. We ask your wisdom and your insight as they're making decisions and as they're um coming together, Lord, let them get give them a sense of like mindedness of what is best for the community. We ask these in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. May be seated. Okay. Just to go over our meeting procedures. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to introduce written material into the record at the public meeting on any item are requested to provide a copy of the written material to the administrative services director, city clerk sitting right over here. Prior to the meeting date, so this material may be distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Speakers must restrict comments onto the item as it appears on the agenda and stay within a three minute time limit. I have the discretion of limiting the total discussion time for any item. If you're on the Zoom meeting, please note that only written comments will be taken via Zoom using the Q and A chat feature. Please enter your comment on the Q and A chat feature. Alrighty, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. City Manager Flora, are there any modifications to the agenda?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I will take the motion to accept the agenda.
I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
I second it.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Sloten and seconded by Councilmember Wilson. Uh, please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam. All right, we'll now move on to presentations. Presentation for proclamation declaring September twenty twenty five a senior center month. Is there someone in the audience that's going to be present here? I'll meet you at the podium. Enrich and better the lives of younger Americans and whereas Highland Senior Service Center has acted as a catalyst for of mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Clear Lake and Lake County, that would include me. And whereas through through the wide array of services programs and activities, the Highland Senior Service Center empowers older adults to contribute to contribute to their own health and well being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas the Highland Senior Service Center affirmed the dignity, self worth and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions. Tapping their experiences, skills and knowledge and enabling their continuing contributions to the committee community and now therefore being proclaimed that Clear Lake City Council does hereby call upon all the citizens to recognize the special contributions of the Highland Senior Service Center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well being of the older adults in our community. Dated this fourth day of September twenty twenty five and signed by me as mayor.
Did you sign it?
I did sign it right there.
Thank you, uh, council members for this proclamation. I appreciate it. We are um doing a lot, working on a lot of things at our center. Uh, hopefully at the beginning of January, I'll be able to come and do a nice presentation to you for all the different things that we plan on adding. Uh, we have applied for a grant for partnership of California, and with that, we hope that we will be able to serve more meals uh than what we are now. We average about thirty seven hundred meals in our Meals on Wheels alone uh every month. So um and we are serving approximately on the average sixty seniors in our community center. So sometimes we've had as much as a hundred and eight, uh, you know, in our center, which is a lot for our community. So uh, history of Clear Lake uh Highland of our organization is we've been doing this since before Meals on Wheels. And I just found some history on our center about how we actually were the only center that serviced all of Lake County in the seventies. So they were serving even at that time sixty five thousand meals a year in our county. And I found a whole lot of arguments where with the city and the other organizations, we used to have three senior uh community centers, not centers per se, but organizations. Um, and I was kind of surprised to see the history of how long that our center has been doing it. So before Meals on Wheels even existed, we were serving Meals on Wheels, but when it came apart, it kind of helped us get the some grant money. Um, but just to let you know, the grant money doesn't cover everything. So each meal that we we try to get is five dollars from our from our uh seniors. Our average uh for our Meals on Wheels is down to about nine cents a meal. So we're already short before we even get started. So just to let people know that we already anticipate that we're about a hundred and twenty thousand short on our basic food program. So every five dollars helps purchase a meal. So anybody can go online at the Clear Lake uh website and there's a donation there. You know, for most people's paychecks, we can see that serve a senior for the whole year. It's eighteen hundred and fifty dollars for us to serve a senior for the whole year. So I want everybody to kind of think about that, but five dollars on that donation thing, even every month, if you donate five dollars. Think about it. That's twelve meals for somebody, but that hurt anybody in our community. Even if you're very low income, you can normally can afford five dollars. So we appreciate any donations that we can get. And thank you guys for the proclamation. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Joyce. Okay, we'll now move on to public comments. Public comment is that time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. Council cannot take action on non agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note the comments from the public will also be taken on each addenda item. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in the chamber? One up, Mrs. Garcia. You still have to introduce yourself, though.
Hi, Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. Um, I just wanted to um I guess bring up now that the seasons are changing, uh, it's going to be raining soon. And I know that there was um various areas in the city um that were discussed recently um by someone who was here special uh guest. Um, but I'm curious as to if we could get an update um on those areas and where my street is. I I he he commented, he called it Lake Yule. And that's what it's going to turn into again come October when it starts pouring. Lake Yule and um it has a lot to do with the new drains that were put in recently that do not work. Um, and so I'm still wondering if that's going to be looked at. They're going to look at the quality of work that was done for the city and the fact that my street has three drains that do not work that are new, brand new. So I'd like to just bring that to the kind of give, you know, a little bit of of reminder about it um and that um I'm hoping maybe something, you know, is proactively being done. So Yule Avenue. Check out the work that's been paid for by the City of Clear Lake, I'm sure. So uh I appreciate any any time that you could uh put to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garcia. One up. Assembly.
Stephanie Hummel, I'm from Clear Lake and like I said before, I'm still learning. So I just wanted to um find out like uh on the consent agenda, I'm not going to get into any of it. I'm just asking a question. If there's a item that I want to talk about or find out about, am I supposed to go to the website? And I don't know if um like if something's been put there, how would we eventually or find out what the um outcome was? And what my really concern is um is it's number seven is the redistricting. I think it's of the fire and I just, you know, it affects all of us. So I just was wondering about that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel.
Well, if I could try to address some of the questions, so um well, the consent agenda is the next item on the agenda. So when the mayor um asks if there's any public comment on any of those items, you're welcome to come back up and make your your comments about that specific one. Um, and then it would be up to the council whether you wanted to actually pull it off for separate consideration or not.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. Are there any other public comments in the chamber? Nope. Are there any on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council requests otherwise or a staff has requested a change under adoption of the agenda, in which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Any item so removed will be taken up following the motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? On the consent agenda?
Selection and its impact on.
Mr. Mayor. So this doesn't have anything to do with fire. This is um the state's plan to redistrict the congressional districts in the state. Um, and this is just an informational item that the city clerk put together. Um, but if you go on the website, you can look at that. You can look at the maps. There's a link there. Um, this is something that was approved by the legislature and will be on a the ballot on a special election in November to be approved or not by the California voters.
Thank you.
There any other public comments? Garcia.
Stephanie Hummel, I'm from Clear Lake and
like I said before, I'm still learning. So I just wanted to um find out like uh on the consent agenda, I'm not going to get into any of it. I'm just asking a question. If there's a item that I want to talk about or find out about, am I supposed to go to the website? And I don't know if um like if something's been put there, how would we eventually or find out what the um outcome was? And what my really concern is um is it's number seven is the redistricting. I think it's of the fire and I just, you know, it affects all of us. So I just was wondering about that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel.
Well, if I could try to address some of the questions, so um well, the consent agenda is the next item on the agenda. So when the mayor um asks if there's any public comment on any of those items, you're welcome to come back up and make your your comments about that specific one. Um, and then it would be up to the council whether you wanted to actually pull it off for separate consideration or not.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. Are there any other public comments in the chamber? Nope. Are there any on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council requests otherwise or a staff has requested a change under adoption of the agenda, in which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Any item so removed will be taken up following the motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? On the consent agenda?
Still Stephanie. I um so my question would be um concerning the um redistricting, it's for the fire, right? Fire. Okay. Let me read it to be correct. Selection and its impact on.
Mr. Mayor. So this doesn't have anything to do with fire. This is um the state's plan to redistrict the congressional districts in the state. Um, and this is just an informational item that the city clerk put together. Um, but if you go on the website, you can look at that. You can look at the maps. There's a link there. Um, this is something that was approved by the legislature and will be on a the ballot on a special election in November to be approved or not by the California voters.
Thank you.
There any other public comments? Garcia. There any other public comments? Garcia.
Well, I'm Margaret Garcia on this redistricting that is um a congressional redistricting. Um, could I'd like to hear the impact it will have on Clear Lake and maybe that can be discussed. Um, item seven. I'd like I'd like to hear the impact that the redistricting would have on our city.
Thank you. Any other comments? None on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So council, do you have any items that you want to uh pull? No?
Um, not pull, but I mean if the city manager would like to give a short discussion on number seven.
Okay. So we'll do that. Okay, we'll we'll approve the rest of the consent agenda and then go to that.
He's saying that I could give a short um summary without.
Yeah, okay, go go for it. Go for it.
Well, um, I would encourage, I mean, the idea of kind of adding this is to um provide awareness to the council on a few different things, I mean, and the community. So there is going to be a special election in November. Um, the state is saying that the cost of that election will be borne or, you know, by the state, they will reimburse um counties. I don't think the counties are going to be looking to the cities to pay because it's a statewide thing. Um, but the real impact here is there would be a change um for congressional representation in Lake County and a number of other areas. So there are links in the staff report that um you can look at the actual maps and see, but generally speaking, um, all of Lake County is currently represented by Congressman Mike Thompson. Most of Lake County, including Clear Lake, would no longer be represented by Congressman Mike Thompson if this is approved. There would be a portion of Hidden Valley and Middletown that would still be in Congressman Thompson's district. Um, the rest of Lake County would be included in what is currently Congressman Lamolfo's district from Chico. And beyond that, I would just encourage you to to look at the maps and and be aware of those changes and then, of course, be educated um when you vote in November.
All right. So I will take a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Sloten and seconded by Councilmember Hooton. Vote in your portal, please.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we'll now move on to item eight, public hearing. For discussion and consideration ordinance number two seven nine dash twenty twenty five amendment to section nine dash four of the Clear Lake Municipal Code regarding residential rental registration and inspection. City Manager Flora, do you like this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Associate Planner Taylor is going to give the initial staff report.
Thank you, council members, and I'd also like to thank um those in the public, particularly the uh realtors who put a lot of input into this and we took it to heart. And added that to what is now the um current proposed um rental housing registration and inspection, proposed updates. So just a little bit of background on it. Um, and as most of you may already know, this was originally adopted in two thousand and one as uh ordinance no one oh two dash oh one. And then two thousand and eight, it went silent for a while and then we don't particularly know what why, but it probably was because of the recession and the housing market uh bubbled that bust. Um, and then back in August of twenty nineteen, council directed staff to revisit the ordinance and and recommended some updates and see what could be done to bring it to current you know, legislation standards. And twenty twenty, city received a proposal from outside contractor to provide rental registration and inspection services, but I believe that did not come to fruition. In twenty twenty, uh, July of twenty twenty, council directed staff to begin implementation of the residential rental registration inspection program, which facilitated the uh hiring of uh chief building inspector and a community development specialist. Our current chief building inspector is Mary Jane Montana, and she will be looking at um uh further down the presentation, um presenting some um inspection checklist that we have developed, um, you know, in house with staff and also some imagery of some current um housing situations which need some attention. So uh so revisiting the ordinance, um, which is now uh ordinance two seven nine two twenty five, which is before you, there was an initial presentation on March twenty twenty five and the Lake County Association of Realtors Task Force requested that they provide some input. They did have some concerns on some of some of the proposals. So the city council granted that request and staff did meet with the Realtor Task Force on a couple of occasions and then on May twenty two, twenty twenty five, Realtor Task Force revised the ordinance language, which was updated in response to their their comments. June fifth, we had another hearing um to redo the first reading. Again, based on the feedback from the public. Council decided to continue the item to give further influence to the the public or specifically realtors to provide their comments and and have staff meet with them uh one or two times there. And then here we are today, um, September fourth, we're now back back in hearing and we're proposing all the updates that we've done and worked with with the realtors. And I think we've come to to some kind of a consensus, I believe, and. And I think we've come to, to some kind of a consensus, I believe, and, and, um, hopefully we'll get this passed today and, and move forward.
Okay, thank you.
So some, uh, just a quick summary of proposed updates, um, inspection and enforcement authority. So essentially what happened here is that code department was tasked with, you know, doing the inspections, um, and, um, issuing violations and, and code violations. So this has shifted to the building department. Um, some of the reasons why that, that would, that shift would made, made some sense logically is because, um, code enforcement, you know, they may be stretched in handling, you know, this type of task because primarily their, their focus on nuisance abatement zoning violations and even operative vehicles, those sorts of things. And, um, centralizing, so we're trying to centralize, uh, the responsibility of the inspections with the building department since they do building permits and do, um, you know, uh, building inspections and that sort of thing. Uh, update code references, essentially pretty straightforward. We want to make sure that align with current state and fire building and housing laws. That's pretty self-explanatory there. Uh, we wanted to clarify the procedures for registration, inspection, you know, inspections and re-inspections. And then some new provisions were added, which included phased inspections, health certification options for, um, property owners and managers, property managers, and then tenant landlord responsibilities, um, kind of outlining what, it kind of goes both ways. So tenants and landlords who have some responsibilities in keeping the, uh, the rentals and, and minimum, at least minimum, um, health and safety standards, living conditions, and then ownership change requirements. Let's see, so inspection checklist, um, at this time I'm going to turn it over to Mary Jane Montana, who's going to go over some of the draft inspection checklist that the staff has, uh, developed and then some imagery of, uh, of properties that may, may need some attention to, so.
That I had the opportunity to, um, go out and do an inspection and I used the new form, which I will give you all a hard copy of, and we've got a few extra for, uh, anybody that wants one. And, um, it was a two-story, single-family dwelling and a garage that had been converted into three units. Uh, I don't know when the conversion happened, but it's been that way for a while. So I went through the inspection checklist, um, as if this would have been a requested inspection, use this as, as a guideline.
If I could just briefly interrupt for the council's benefit, this was a tenant that called the building department because of concerns with the housing that they were renting and asked for the building department to come and take a look.
Right, so it seemed like a good opportunity to kind of test this out. And, um, probably will be making a few changes in the checklist a little bit, but it gives you an idea of what it would look like and how we're going to propose it to the owner. Um, this, the manager, if there is one, as well as the tenant, so that they have proof that we went out, when we went out and what the required inspections were. One of the things that I like to do is give the owner or operator the opportunity to make corrections. However, um, sometimes that's not always possible, but we don't like to red, red-tag a building, um, because then the tenants have to move out and we've just created three homeless families. So not something that we want to do. So this is just kind of a informational for you to take a look at. Um, Mike, if you want to pull up the pictures, I don't have. Alan's got it. Okay, this is what we found there. That was an outlet that was taken out and changed out. Um, there's another picture that I have, but I don't think it got in here, uh, of a piece of metal that was stuck in that. This is, uh, a two-pane window that the interior pane was broken, but it wasn't cleaned up very well and those shards of glass still remain there. And that, it kind of looks kind of strange. It's not an, um, UFO or anything like that. That's the bathroom ceiling, uh, which indicates it's either leaking above in the piping or that there's excessive moisture in the bathroom because it doesn't have adequate ventilation. So that'll have to be in, uh, taken apart and taken a better look at. That creates black mold and so that creates a, an issue for habitability. There are some, there were other issues. There wasn't garbage receptacles that were adequate for the tenants. Um, the deck and the stairway were, um, in need of repair, replacement, need to be taken down because the, the two-story one goes up above what was the, the, um, single-family dwelling, so it's exterior and it, it wasn't rated for exterior. Those are just a few things and, and what I request is that the owner, operator, meet me onsite so that I can go over the, the corrections needed and then that they make that appointment within a very short time and then that they take out a building permit to make the repairs if necessary. So, uh, that's kind of how we had a little bit of a field trial on our, on how this might work and it seems to work pretty good. We'll keep working it out as we go.
So that's the brief overview, council. I don't know, um, the last meeting we had with the Realtors Task Force, Vice Mayor Sloten and Councilmember, um, Hooton participated in. So I don't know if they want to take the opportunity to provide any updates, but of course, uh, staff are here to, um, address any questions you may have about the specifics of the recommended change.
Okay, well, let me just start with, are, are there any questions from council of staff?
Um.
Now I'll go to you.
Oh, I, I did have a question, so the, the list that you sent out, there's only a couple of things checked off, so this isn't completely like filled in from.
Excuse me, the, the ones that are checked are the ones that, um, are found to be in compliance.
Okay, so that's going to be in compliance?
Yeah, that are in compliance. The rest of them, checkbox only if inspection complete and found to be in compliance. So if they don't have a check, then they're not in compliance. Wow, so.
So all of these items except for the two, well, three with the swimming pool are not in compliance?
That's correct. Some to a greater degree than others, and that's why I'd, um, like to meet the property manager or the owner onsite so we can go over in detail what they're going to need to do with the, uh, a repair permit.
Wow. How long does it take, um, to do that inspection?
Uh, this one took about an hour, hour and a half. And, um, some folks weren't home, so I wasn't able to get into the other rental units at the time. And, um, so I, if I inspected all three, it would probably take an hour and a half to two hours.
Okay, and what? I know you said phased inspections, how do you, how are you going to, you're going to, how are you going to choose what inspections you do? For the, the order of them?
I'll, I'll address that one.
Okay.
So, I mean, our, our current plan, if the ordinance is passed and implemented, um, we have the software tool that we can identify, um, properties. Um, well, of course, we know from our code enforcement activities and other things that there's a number of problem property owners that have persistent problems across their property. So, um, we'll be doing analysis of folks that have a significant number of properties and we can cross-reference properties that have a certain number of code and by, code enforcement violations existing or, uh, lease activity. And so our plan is to prioritize those ones that we know are problem properties first and, and then go down from there.
Any feel for how many of these you can do in a month, a year, whatever?
Well, it's going to depend on a lot of things, but, um, that, that's where you're getting the three-year thing that we talked about before is we're estimating that with the number, um, we can probably do about a third of them in a year.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Jessica Howe, did you want to comment on your meeting?
Um, I think that the meeting, um, overall went well. The Lake County Association of Realtors and the representative, um, sat with myself and Mark and Dirk and Alan and, um, we went back and forth through the table and we were able to talk about each and every item that they had a problem with and with explanation and reasoning. It's when we left, it felt that everybody understood why we were doing what we were doing on each item. Um, I had a good feeling leaving, you know? So I think, uh, I think it was productive and I think we're on the right track.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. And are there any other questions?
I did just, I concur with, uh, Councilman, that I felt after the several meetings that we hashed out a lot of the issues. So I think I left with the idea that, uh, we, uh, we compromised on, on different items than, I feel confident that, uh, it will be a workable situation.
Okay, we'll find out here. Did you have a comment? No? Okay, well, time for a public comment now, so I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes a comment on this item?
I'm Timothy Toy. I'm a, a real estate broker in Lake County and we manage close to around two hundred properties in the county, many of them, and Clear Lake, spoken to this before. I've personally been doing property management for over, over forty years and it's not easy, there's lots of pitfalls. And I, uh, and I'm, I've had some involvement with the Realtor Task Force and I think that it's been a good interaction and I think the ordinance has improved. However, I think the, um, the city may be setting themselves up for lots of pitfalls because there's lots of pitfalls in, in property management and you're, you're about to get into the property management business. However, you, however else you might describe it. Bruno Sabatier and others suggested a trial program. Uh, the, uh, example we had there sound like a really good idea to do that and to do more of that rather than to leap into it, which I suggest is what you're, you're considering doing. I would, um, I think there's unintended consequences coming that you're not aware of, having done so much property management over my time. Here are some of them. Increased cost of being a landlord in, in Clear Lake. Landlords exiting the Clear Lake rental business, a reduction in the rental supply. Increased rents to cover the cost of the ordinance. Tenants displaced by city mandated repairs. Less desire by tenants to rent in the city. A breakdown in trust between the city and the citizens. Increased homelessness, potential legal action against the city for violation of privacy and increased negative reputation, the reputation of the city. Now, admittedly, there will be some improved supply and that's good. But, uh, I would recommend, given the likely impact on the citizens of the city, that one of the, uh, council members, uh, recommend a trial program and, and put it up for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toy. Are there any other comments?
One, I want to thank you for bringing this back up because this was an ordinance that, you know, helped put forward a long time ago and we had to suspend it because of the situation with the city's finances. I've lived in other areas and I bought, purchased houses back in Illinois. They have inspections on rentals every month or every year. If you change renters, they have to have it inspected before they can rent it. If they decide to sell that renter, you have to have it inspected before you can put it on the market. And when they sit there saying this is going to be a cost, it's a cost of business. And they already get enough rent here in Clear Lake. I mean, they've tripled their rent here just because of the fires. So they're already, you know, making money off of this stuff. I think this is very important. I got apartment complexes right across the street from the senior center that I have a group meeting at my senior center twice a month because of the conditions of their apartments. So yes, I firmly believe that this needs to be put in place. I believe we need to step up right away. I don't believe it needs to be a trial. We've had it here before, we need to step it up and we need to fix these places. We don't want people living in, uh, houses that are unsafe. And yes, I mean, some houses you may have to evict somebody out of because they're so unsafe. But, and that's not against their constitutional rights or, or anything, that's for their own safety. Do we want people living in a house that might burn down and kill them while they're sleeping? I don't, you know, so I think this is something that we really need to step up and get it going again, you know? We already had the trial period before, all you have to do is talk to past people that have done it, you know? But I really seriously say we need to get up and one of the things I'd like to say is these older apartment complexes, I think we need to be on them because they do house a lot of people and they're not, I don't believe, up to code at all. So I think that's where personally I would want to start. That's up to you guys, but that's just my opinion that we need to start with those. And I think every house that's a rental house should be inspected. I don't think, I remember that we talked about five or six before they fell into that category. I think every house that's a rental house should be inspected before they can even rent it out. And if they're rented now, that's fine, inspect them. But when they become empty, they should always have to be inspected. That's just protocol for most places that have these inspection laws and they're everywhere. It's not like we're creating something new. This is something that's all over the United States, is for the safety of our community. And I think that's what we're after, especially when we are in a fire zone. I see something like that, that socket there that could start a fire and burn down not only one unit, but could burn down a lot of units. That's the safety issue for our city, so I say step it up and get it going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Overton. Anyone else? I'll get you next, Katie.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Rick Mayo, forty-six-year resident of the community. I served on a planning commission, so I do understand about these types of ordinances. Joyce stole my thunder. She took everything, almost completely wiped out my whole speeches up for her. And I'm going to be very brief and more brief than you can imagine. Uh, I know that's something that most people here don't. Yeah. Uh, anyway, the, the people who suffer the most in dilapidated housing and unsafe housing is the poor, the immigrant, the seniors and the disabled. They're the, they're the victims. Because for many, many, many times, they don't, they don't have the right credit score in order to get in the type of housing that is livable. And then they have to, uh, uh, rent from, uh, what is well-known as slum landlords. And, you know, we've, we, we, I've, I've lived in some housing like that here in this community. And I've had to take landlords in the court because, uh, the bathrooms are not wide enough for me to get a wheelchair in, I can't get a chair even up to the entrance of the door. That's shameful. And under ADA, you understand, there's a lot of, of unsafe housing in this community. And the apartment complex that I live in now, and I'm going to be real brief, sir. Uh, I had to bring a congressman in to force them to put in an ADA shower because I couldn't take a bath for eight months after I moved in there. It was beyond my understanding how they could even get an occupancy without having to comply with ADA. But nevertheless, you understand, uh, we have to do something about the, uh, the, the poor housing in this community and that, and, and, and making the citizens of this community pay for these, uh, inscrupulous landlords, you understand, that have no conscience, understand, uh, because of the amount of rents that they charge and the people can't do any better. We have to do better here. And, uh, I agree with Joyce, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. You, you stayed within your three minutes. Got it down. Says Evans come up.
Hi, my name is Katie Evans. I'm a real estate broker and owner of Evans Realty. My husband and I manage several homes around Lake County and in Clear Lake and we have a rental home of our own. Um, first, I want to thank the city for working with the Board of Realtors. Um, I think that was a very positive. Process and I appreciate the input that we're able to give. Um, I do want it noted that I do not support this and I have not supported it. Going forward, um, and these are my concerns and they remain. Uh, tenants will be most impacted and have we sought any input from tenants to see how they respond to this? Um, and. I also feel that tenant tenant rental property has been singled singled out. We, they're not the only. Citizens in the county are in the city and single um owner owned owner occupied homes also are a concern. Um, there's already code enforcement in place to address any problems with housing. Uh, I don't see why another department needs to be implemented for that. Um, as far as the the committee process, uh, we were promised, the Board of Realtors was promised to see a copy of. The proposal tonight so we could compare what had been updated. Uh, we did not see that until the um documents were. Released for public. Um, and another concern that we had, or and my husband and I particularly, is in our last meeting, we asked Mister Flora. If public comment was considered and and particularly negative public comment and he told us it was not. So that's, I I think, something that does need to be considered. Um, lastly, um. I think the we finally narrowed down last time that there's about three thousand units. Um, a hundred and eight dollars apiece plus a thousand units rented per inspected per year. That generates about four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for the city. Um. I think the only people that are really, the only entity that's poised to gain from this is the city of Clear Lake by. Getting more money and more data. Um, I think there's other ways that that could be accomplished. Um, I'm like Mister Toy, I encourage a pilot program to be implemented to work out all the bugs. I think. Mary's inspection last week, that's a great place to start, so we can come back and look at it um more closely. Um, and then to address uh Mrs. Overton's view that everyone, every city has this in place. There's only a small handful of cities and counties in California that have that, so not everybody is doing this. So I don't think that. Is necessarily that we need to jump on this same bandwagon and assume that this is happening throughout the state. Because it's a small handful of places. And in fact, in Salinas, it was voted down by the citizens, so. It was not embraced when put to public vote. So, thank you for your time and I appreciate the ability to comment.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans. There any comments, other? Comments from the public? Mrs. Garcia.
Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. Um, I had a question for um the inspector as far as the example um that you. Spoke about. There was three units that you were ideally there to inspect. Is that right?
But you need to wait, you you need to, we've been through this a number of times, Miss Garcia. You need to address your questions to the council. And if they would like to have them addressed, they will ask staff to do so. This is your three minutes to make comments or ask questions.
Just to the council, not of the person who spoke about the project? Okay, um. I I'm just wondering, as far as the two units that couldn't be entered because they weren't home, which will be a problem. You know, across this process, um, what would be done in that instance um as far as revisiting or re getting a new appointment? How is that how the process would work in order to get the inspection complete? Um, and I think you're being pretty optimistic about how long. It's gonna take to get these inspections done. You think it's gonna be so many per year? I I would say it would probably be twice that. Um, that's how it always works out. And it's gonna be difficult to get those uh inspections scheduled or rescheduled. So I I just think you're being optimistic about the time that it's gonna take. Um, and it seems like the city wants to get into one business or the other, water. Project management or or property management. Be nice if the city just focus on, you know. Uh, but I mean, the the inspections are a good idea, uh, but I think you're going about it too hastily. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garcia. All right, are there any other public comments? Are there any on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, um. Okay, we'll now close the public hearing. So now I'm gonna take a motion. All right, does anybody on Council have any comments?
Um, I'd like to acknowledge and agree that I do think that there will be some issues that come up and. Um, things that we're not anticipating happening. Um, I would encourage staff to keep notes of. Maybe things that need to be amended or changed to keep the processes moving smoother. If there's some part of it that. Just doesn't make sense once we get into the weeds, like we can have them removed. We can refine this as we go. Um, but I think uh, you know, it would be nice to to get the process started, whether we call it a pilot or. Um, a trial period or whatnot, um. You know, I just want to remind everybody that we do have the opportunity in the future to change things as we need to. So um, I think it's good to be optimistic.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any other comments from Council?
I have. Or I have a comment. Um, well, I want to first uh thank Hooton and uh Sooton for having uh doing this and meeting. With everyone and it going back and forth. Um, you know, one thing I do want to uh comment is that. Um, back in twenty thirteen, I had an apartment and I was given a ten-day notice for an inspection and that was in Redwood City. Um, and I happened to be working at the time and so. The landlord had a key and they went in and did an inspection. So um, I think. It's a common thing as long as we're giving notice to the people and we're giving them a heads up and I don't know if that's in the works, like if. That's something that we're doing as far as how many days notice. And then, you know, if landlords are present or, you know, something like that, but I think that is important just to for the privacy purpose. Um. And uh, yeah, that's pretty much it, but I I like this ordinance and I'm glad that we were able to work out the kinks and I hope it. Has a lot of success and helps out our people of the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Downey. Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
I know you always have a comment.
No, I don't. I was gonna go like.
Well, then let me uh, let me get my comment on I I I hang on. I also agree. I think your your comments are well-stated, uh, Councilmember Hooton. Listening through this process, I know I. Requested, I think, uh, Mister Hughes is one that actually requested a committee. Um, I guess he was on the committee. I understand he wasn't on it the whole time. But I think we gave, we gave the um. Realtors. Uh. A great opportunity to participate and as from my understanding, they did and we made some changes. This is something that's been uh out there for a long time. It needs to be corrected. It needs to move forward, so. Now I will take a a motion to uh on the on the item. I've closed the public hearing. What?
Well, yes, well, I was just gonna make one quick comment. There were several mentions to a pilot project and. Um, we did talk about it at the last meeting with the Realtors. I mean, we need to adopt an ordinance in order to have something to enforce, so. You know, I'm not exactly sure how to do the pilot project, but I did offer that staff will be more than happy to. If the council moves forward with this program. To come back in six months or a year or whatever and have another meeting with them and debrief and. Um, get any lessons learned or suggestions they may have and then bring um any of that input back to the council for possible amendments if more.
Thank you. That sounds like a great idea, actually. So, all right, everybody else? Anyone else have anything? Now, Vice Mayor.
I move that we approve ordinance number two seven nine dash two zero two five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake. Amending section nine dash four of chapter nine of the City of Clear Lake Municipal Code regarding rental housing unit registration. Inspection and inventory.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made by Vice Mayor Sooton and seconded by Councilmember Downey. Now we can vote on the portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to business items. Uh, this first item, number nine, discussion and consideration of the Lake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And incorporation into the safety element of the City of Clear Lake General Plan. That's gonna be uh.
A director label will uh introduce item.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and Council. Tonight, the City Council is being asked to approve resolution. Twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one, adopting the Lake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Incorporating hazard mitigation information into the safety element of the City of Clear Lake General Plan as required by FEMA. A little, a little background on this, um. Lake County Office of Emergency Services, along with the City of Lakeport and the City of Clear Lake. Has completed the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Lake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan project. Lake County OES, the City of Lakeport and Clear Lake hired the Resiliency Initiative, TRI. The consulting firm that has supported us in the updating process. Tonight, we have Faith Newton, who is our consultant with the Resilience Initiative, who is on Zoom right now. To give us a little presentation.
Thank you, Addie, and thank you, Council, for the time this evening. My name is Faith Newton with. Are you able to hear me?
Speaker is muted. At bottom of the page there.
Are you able to hear me now? Good evening. Are you able to hear me now?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Um, and I appreciate the time this evening. My name is Faith Newton with the Resiliency Initiative. And um, it's been our pleasure to work with Clear Lake along with Lakeport and the county on the multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. Within this plan, there is a base plan that is in uh covering the unincorporated. Area of the county and then a specific Clear Lake Annex. Your Clear Lake Annex um is broken out into identical chapters that mirror Lakeport and the county. So that is all flowing together to have a consistent and cohesive viewpoint. Um, in chapter one, we identified how we went about the process. We had a hazard mitigation planning committee. Um, and several public sessions throughout this process. Um, we made sure that we had a collective view from all organizations and opportunities for the public to be engaged in this process. Um, through a working group, the Hazard Mitigation Committee, as well as public input. Um, these were engaged throughout multi-steps across the process um and working through the project. The committee um was made up of representatives that had initially worked on the county's hazard mitigation plan back in twenty twenty-three. Um, and were approved by the Board of Supervisors to continue this process for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five multi-jurisdiction process. With the public input, we had several workshops um that are listed within chapter one of the annex as well as conducted a survey of the. Community population um where we provided the opportunity for the public to seek input um and provide information. Back to our group as we worked through the different hazards for the different jurisdictions within the county. Additionally, each jurisdiction maintained a project website throughout this process to keep up um information and updates as we moved throughout. The assessment and the um changes to the mitigation plan. In chapter two, we reviewed the hazards of concern in the area for each jurisdiction, reviewing from your previous plan into the current version. Um, the hazards are consistent across the overall base plan for the county, Clear Lake and Lakeport. Um, so we had to do an analysis of all of the potential hazards and then verifying that to the specifics for the jurisdiction. In chapter three, we go through the overall profiling for specifically in the annex Clear Lake, looking at demographics. Um, and the conditions of the jurisdiction and making sure we're looking at it with a specific lens. And then four through fifteen um of the annex was reviewing the individual hazards that were identified through the committee. And through feedback as being the concerns um to be addressed in the hazard mitigation plan. And so each chapter is specific to the hazard. It is a hazard profile, a hazard review. Reviewing past incidents as well as dating data and information of the conditions for. Each jurisdiction, so specifically in the Clear Lake Annex, how all of these are perceived for the jurisdiction of Clear Lake. Um, mitigation actions again are consistent by the overall goal and objective that we have aligned with the project. But Clear Lake specifically has thirty-two mitigation actions that are identified in their annex. Um, some of these are in progress. Some of them have not been started and then we added um some new as part of the process as well. These are all reviewed through our public workshops and with the Hazard Mitigation Committee. And then the last um of the chapter is the adoption and maintenance, and so it is an ongoing plan that is required. And as a part of the process, and so we will um move forward with that adoption. And the way we're going through that is the Hazard Mitigation Committee was the first initial review and approval from a local perspective. This plan was then sent to the California Office of Emergency Services for their review revisions and approval to align with California. Requirements. It has since been sent to FEMA and has been reviewed and approved from FEMA, meeting the requirements for a multi-jurisdiction plan. And then ultimately to have a multi-jurisdictional plan, each jurisdiction has to individually um approve and adopt their. Components, and so we're in that process now with tonight being Clear Lake. Um, Lakeport is scheduled for the sixteenth. And then this will go in front of the Board of Supervisors. And once all jurisdictions have approved, you will have a finalized twenty twenty-five multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan. Um, it's been our pleasure to support this process and I will turn this back over to Addie. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from Council? All right. Any uh comments in public? Any on Zoom?
Lake County Disaster Declaration. I'm missing the sulfur fire on there. That was in October in seventeen.
Uh, are you looking at the annex or the?
Table six.
Which document?
Disaster declarations.
States, is it page? Like table six, Lake County Disaster Declarations. It goes back to two thousand six. And the sulfur fire was in two thousand, October two thousand seventeen. It's just not on there. Was there, was there no declaration at that point on?
No, there was. I mean, I I still don't know which document you're looking at. Um, there's two of them that are attached to. No, there was. I mean, I, I still don't know which document you're looking at. Um, there's two of them that are attached here, but, um, I mean, this is, we can, if you want to tell us to add it, I mean, it's, it's, uh, not relevant to the mitigation measures, but, um, we can, we can add it in, make sure it gets in there. I mean, it definitely was a declared disaster, so.
Right. Thank you for that catch. I agree with you. It should be added. Um, okay, are any other comments, questions? Or you take a motion? Anybody?
I move that we approve. I move that we approve resolution 2025-31, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, adopting the Lake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's September 4, 2025, 25, and incorporating hazard mitigation information into the safety element of the City of Clear Lake General Plan.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Slodden.
I second.
Clarify as amended with the.
Second by Councilmember Downey. I think she beat you to it. Um, let you vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. We'll now move on to item 10, a word of contract for the Arrowhead Road slash Huntington Avenue Drainage Project. Hey, Manager Flora?
Uh, Project Manager, hey, Project Manager Hayes will present the staff report.
Good evening, Council. Uh, the City Council is being asked to approve a contract for the Arrowhead Road Huntington Avenue Drainage Project. I'm an authorized city manager to approve up to 10% for additional unforeseen contract amendments. The city, uh, solicited proposals through OpenGov on August 11th and we opened the bids on September 2nd earlier this week. We got six bids from contractors. Uh, the lowest bid was from Precision Escavating and Grading for $161,162. Uh, the city would like to award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder being Precision Excavating and Grading. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions on this side? No? Open it up to the public. You have any comments? Seeing none, bring it back on Zoom. Are there any comments?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, back for deliberation and motion. All right.
I move to approve the contract for the Arrowhead Road slash Huntington Avenue Project and authorize the city manager to approve up to 10% for additional unforeseen contract amendments.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Councilmember Downey and seconded by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we'll now move on to city manager and council member reports. For norms and procedures, council reports at the end of the council meeting shall be limited to announcing mayor-appointed, yeah, what's this? Uh, announcing mayor-appointed regional board activities on which council members serve, city and city-sponsored activities and items which directly affect the city. City Manager Flora, do you have any comments that, uh, directly affect the city?
Just, just a couple, Mr. Mayor, that I wanted to mention, um, for whatever reason, um, uh, there's been a number of water leaks around town lately, so, um, there was one on Oakmont last week. Um, there's a pretty significant one in the tree streets. That's Golden, both Golden State's territory. And then, um, one in the, the village, so, um, keep an eye on those. It's gonna, some of those are gonna require some significant road reconstruction after they're fixed. Um, and then, uh, we had a call today. We got the, um, overview of what's called our RENA numbers. So, these are state mandated, um, numbers of housing that we're supposed to produce. We're at the, almost at the end of our current housing element cycle, so, um, that ends in 2027. And so we're gonna have to start working on updating our housing element and the state is working through the new allocation of housing units. Um, so, unfortunately, the state's projecting that all of Lake County has declining population, but we are being given at this time a 40% increase in the housing units that we're supposed to produce over what we had to do over the last period. So, um, a little confusing, significantly frustrating. Um, we are, um, we have until next Friday to file an appeal with HCD, so I don't know how successful it'll be, but, um, the three jurisdictions are gonna be working together on, um, filing that. And so, um, and then, so they, uh, provide a general allocation of numbers of units that have to be produced in the county and then the three jurisdictions are gonna have to work together, create criteria and determine, um, what the numbers are for each, uh, jurisdiction. So, we'll keep you updated on that process, um, as we move forward, but not the greatest news. While, you know, it's frustrating that, you know, we've been successful in, um, generating the sort of affordable, low and very low units that the state has required of us. Uh, we're nowhere near producing the number of moderate or above moderate units that they want us to produce. I guess with that, that's very.
Thank you, our city manager. Uh, start over to my left, Councilmember Hooten.
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Wilson.
I attended the Legal Cities Meeting last week, Friday in Fortuna. Um, a big focus of the meeting was about, um, fire issues. Um, a consultant from the state came in and stated that one in every seven acres, uh, in the state has burned in the last 10 years. Um, that there's been, uh, 57,502 structures, um, destroyed and a loss of eight, 188 lives. Um, the focus was on, um, what we can do in, um, our cities to mitigate fires and the, um, there was an urging to, um, have people start small. So, it could just start with something as simple as taking the wood chips from around your house and then people will, um, likely keep on once they get into the habit. But right now, um, there, um, was an agreement that a lot of people are angry about the, um, fire maps, et cetera, but the fact is, um, fires are here and we have to step up to, um, make sure that they don't impact our cities as much as they have.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Downey.
Um, I have nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Slodden.
Nothing to report.
And I have nothing to report. While we limited it to city items, all right, didn't talk about this. Moving right along, future agenda items. Any council member wish to get consensus to place an item on a future agenda? Not at this time? All righty. So, I think that we will now, at seven, six, 17, adjourn to close session. After a short break.